One o'clock.
Through you, Mayor Kane, you are now live on YouTube.
Thank you, then we will call the meeting to order at four o'clock. I've done a quick scan and see we've got our full council here, we have a clerk present. Are there any declarations of community interests of general nature thereof? I see none. I don't see a motion here to confirm the agenda. None of my, I don't know what I have here anyway, but I believe we do need a motion to confirm the agenda given up. Thank you, Larry, seconded by Scott, all in favor. It's carried, thank you. And I already covered the community interests, so we're up to our delegations and the first one, 3.1, our Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, and that's presented by Sarah Tanner from the, with the county. And I see that Sarah's with us. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for finding time for me to come to your meeting today on your agenda. And I'd like to give an update on the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan for Northumberland. You remember, I came and spoke to you at the beginning of last year, I think it was, or earlier this year, I forget. And we talked about the provincial directive that we needed to put this plan together and how we were going to solicit all the evidence and data we needed to determine what the priorities are. So today, it's just an update so you can see where we've got to. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, the province requires that we have a multi-sectoral approach to the development of our plan. And we've been very successful in Northumberland engaging the support from health. We have primary healthcare, we have mental health, we have public health, we have community health. We have our police services, our fire services, we have paramedicine, we have some community agencies. We have youth and children's services and we have community and social services. So we have a really good wide scope of people helping our agencies, helping to put this plan together. Next slide, please, so that we can take into account as many different approaches as possible. Just as a reminder again, that this is required under the Safe For Ontario Act, more specifically, the Police Services Act, that this plan needs to be put together and we actually have to submit it to the province by the 1st of July this year. Next slide, please. And again, let's just look at this, the whole idea of the plan and the amendment to the Police Services Act is around how we start to refocus and reinvest our resources away from that critical response in the middle, that instant response, which is sort of the 911 calls. And how do we start to invest in other areas to try and reduce those calls? So the second circle there, the yellow one, which is called risk intervention. I put an example there, in Northumberland, we have our situation table where agencies come together and talk about situations where people or families are in immediate risk or crisis and what they can do to support that family, trying to reduce again the numbers of calls to 911. Another example would be our homelessness coordinated response team, where again frontline workers come together and work to ensure that the resources we have are going to people who are most in need and again avoiding that incident response, both critical and non-critical. The blue circle there is about prevention. And again, I've listed just a couple of examples, the way that we're trying to prevent people getting to critical and non-critical need. We have a transitional housing scheme where people are receiving individualized care plans, looking at their needs to, how they can be healthy, how they can be safe, how they can live independently before they move on to living on their own. We also implement diversion, which is where everybody that comes into the homelessness system, just as an example, we do actually look at diverting them away from the system before we give services. So where else can you receive service? Are there other places you can go? How can we help you be successful outside of the shelter? And then finally, the green circle on the outside, the province are also encouraging us to invest in this service, which is about social development. And that's where we invest in things like safe driving courses, safe swimming courses, early on child and family centers, even food security, these are all investments which help keep our community healthy and safe and helping people to remain housed and move our services away or our investments away from needing 911 responses. Next slide, please. So we have worked hard to get all the evidence we need to determine the priorities. So we've done a survey out to all our service providers, we've done a survey out to community members. We've had conversations with different groups about what's going on for them, where they can see need, what's working well, what we could do differently. We've looked at local, regional and national data, so whether that's back Canada, whether that's our hospitals and local health integration network, whether that's our education board, our police services boards, we've looked at a whole range of different data and laid that on top of the things that people were telling us and the things that agencies and services were telling us. Excuse me, we also have looked at strategic plans, excuse me, including your own. So we've looked at what is it that people are saying is priorities? Where are you investing, where does your time need to go to improve the community? And we've looked at what our networks are doing as well. And we put all of that information together to try and determine what are the priorities in Northumberland. Next slide, please, so that we can honestly say that our response is evidence-based. And you can see here, these are the four priorities across Northumberland, which are evidence-based. I'm sure there's no surprises there, of course, there were lots of other priorities. People talked about clean beach beaches, they talked about cycle paths, they talked about investments into libraries. But these were just the four that were top. And these are the four that for community safety and wellbeing, we've decided we are going to tackle over the next four or five years as a collaborative and a collective approach, putting all our resources and best work aligning with these four priorities. Next slide, please. We recognize that these priorities all work really well together, that none of them work alone. And we have put together this program model, I know it looks a little bit busy, I'm just going to talk you through it really quickly, to help us understand how community safety and wellbeing can actually help us start to coordinate some of this work. So if we take the blue column on the left-hand side there, why are we doing it? Well, it's a provincial directive, we've been told we have to do it. How are we going to coordinate it? How are we going to report it? Well, if you remember, the municipalities approached the county and we agreed that the county would coordinate this on behalf of all the municipalities so that we don't have seven different plans needing reporting across the county, we have one plan. So the county will continue to coordinate this with support from the municipalities and the police services to be able to report back to the province. So who is it that's doing it? That was that first slide when we looked at all the different members that are currently on the advisory committee, that multi-sectoral approach. And we will be moving towards a collaborative, so the current leadership table, that current advisory committee, their role was to get this plan together, their role was to find the data, find the evidence, look for the trends, look for the opportunities and put the plan together. But as we, as the plan is submitted to the province and we move into the implementation phase, we will move into a collaborative, we will change our terms of governance and ensure that we can be an implementation group. So the what, well, what we discovered through all of our research was that there were certain values that came through, through all of the priorities. And that was the need for new and improved collaboration, the need for us to find ways that we can start to share the knowledge that we have and the need to improve our access to services. So access isn't only about where a service is located, it could be who's eligible for the service, it could be what times the service is available for, it could be whether there's a cost for the service, so we need to improve access. So they were the sort of three main values that came through. We've talked about the priorities, no surprise there, mental health, poverty, income and employment, substance use and homelessness and affordable housing, they were the priorities across Northumberland. But I think the part that really makes it different and makes it really valuable in Northumberland, makes us sort of stand apart a bit, is we know that people are already doing this work. In Northumberland, we knew, we know that there are agencies and networks that are working really hard on those four priorities. And so we're going to do it with those networks. We're going to look at activities that support the work that those agencies are doing, those networks are doing. And as the Northumberland Community Safety and Wellbeing Collaborative, we will support with data, we will support in any way that we can to coordinate some of that work, ensure there's a level of consistency. Ensure, for example, that consistency in language, that when we talk about youth, we're all talking about the same thing. We know in Northumberland, you know, some people say youth is under 26 years of age, some people say youth is under 18 years of age, so we already have differences in how we define things. That's just one example. So that collaborative will help all of these different networks and agencies. And please note, this is just some examples, I know there's lots more than this in this very bottom row, but I did just want to show that we know there are people doing this work and our role is to help coordinate and support that, next slide, please, so that we can move towards a safer community. So I'm just going to go quickly through these slides because I want you to see that what the group have done is taken all that evidence and data that I talked about, that actually identified what the four priorities are for Northumberland and then set some really high-level goals. What is it, what's our, what's the visionary goal that we want to achieve? Why are we even doing this? Next slide, please. So for each of those priorities, we've looked at that high vision, what is it we want to do? And we've then taken those goals and split them into objectives. So after the goal, what are the objectives? What is it we can actually achieve, what can be measured? We've broken that down into the activities that that would take, what steps are going to be taken? And also then the measures of success, how will we know whether it is successful? Next slide. So we've done this for each of the priorities, and I'm just going to go through this quickly. You'll see here that we've put collaboration as one of the goals, that visionary goal for mental health, next slide, please. And then we've broken it down into some actual objectives. And again, this is just example, there are goals and objectives that each of the things listed. We've then broken that down into actual steps, so the agencies can start to pick and choose from this a bit, a little bit like a menu, there's some of the things that in their strategic plans and their work plans that they can just use because we already have the evidence, we've already done that work, we've already looked at measures of success. We already know how we can determine the impact that things have, next slide, please. So you can see that we've done this with each of the four priorities. With poverty, income and employment, we've included food security, that was really important through our consultations and our research. People regularly talked about food security, but they also talked about we need to include education more in what we're doing. So you'll see that come out in some of the actions, next slide, please. And again, just like the others, those goals are broken down into the objectives and then how we're actually going to do it and then how we're going to measure what is successful, next slide, please. The province are very interested in how we measure what has been successful and that is a requirement in the, in the plan before submission. Finally, in our substance use and addiction, you'll see there the last goal, the fourth goal is about alternative resolutions and responses. We know that there's a lot of innovation across Northumberland, we know there are people and agencies working to do things differently and try new things, next slide, please. And you'll see that we have included that in some of our activities and some of our objectives. So you can see under activities there, number three, promoting the RAM clinic. We know already how successful that's been in a very short time, so let's see if we can support that for either, either further sessions. But let's try something new, number four, we don't do social prescribing yet in Northumberland, maybe that's something we can do. I'm just showing you this so you can sort of see we're acknowledging what's working well, how can we ensure it's sustainable? How can we increase it? But we're also looking at some of the things that are a little bit new and maybe we can try those, next slide, please. So that just gives an overview of how we've taken each of those priorities. This slide just shows you that we're just sort of on that yellow chevron there. We're just about ready to take the full plan to county council for their approval before submission. And then we're going to move on to how do we make this plan, how do we start implementing it? How do we start aligning all the good work in it and how do we document and evaluate? Next slide, please. So as I've just said, in terms of us moving on, we need to ensure that we can increase our collaboration. We need to ensure that accessibility is in everything that we do. We've heard very much that we need to include people with lived and living experience, so we can encourage our networks and providers to do that. And we need to ensure that we have really great governance as we move on to that collaborative collective model, next slide, please. And then this is my final slide and I just wanted to, to show, I know it's a bit of a busy slide, I apologize for that, but there really wasn't another way to show you. We have already put together a model for measuring what we've done. So we have already have come up with a way to show our quantitative and our qualitative measurements. We have come up with something that shows a baseline so that we can start to report to the province exactly what we have done, what's worked well, what we can move more on, I do apologize, my camera. And we put that together already so that we can work with organizations to be able to start measuring what they're doing straight away. That was my last slide, but I, if there's any questions or thoughts or comment.
Thank you, Sarah. We have a few minutes for questions, I'll turn over to council if anyone has anything. Don't have everybody up on my screen. I see, I see only Larry on my screen right at the moment, Scott have a question or powder, Larry, sorry, Mark?
Okay, it's Pat.
Oh, sorry, Pat, go ahead.
First of all, I just wanted to say, thank you, Sarah, your slide presentation broke things down very well. Um, what I didn't see and I'm sure is happening is sort of where crossover activities are have, are happening between your four areas. Will that show up more in your, sort of your activity page? It's like they'll see duplication to say this is, you know, not just mental health, it's also housing or whatever?
Yeah. That's a really super question, I'm so pleased you asked it, absolutely it will, you're completely right, councillor. None of those things work in a silo, I'm so pleased you said that, all of those things are interconnected. They're interconnected in so many ways. So we already have the research that tells us, for example, that people living on a low income may be more, more in the mental health system, maybe more in the homelessness system and so on, they are all interconnected. So that you're right, you'll see it in the activity page where it's linked and cross-referenced, but you'll also see it in the network and the reporting, very clear in the reporting as well, where we're looking at impact, because the impact in one area is likely to have an impact on one of the other priorities. So yes, it's throughout the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I have a quick comment, I'm privileged to work with Sarah on this committee and I'll tell you that because of her organizational skills and her planning, I'm sure that Northumberland is way ahead of the average bear on this one. And I'd like to compliment you, Sarah, for the effort you've put into this committee, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Motion that the committee of the hall received the information, the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan that was presented by Sarah Tanner of the Thumblin County, have a mover, please. Thank you, Larry, seconded by Mark, all in favor. That's carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second, 3.2, our second presenter, Period Promise Northumberland, and we have two presenters today. Maggie Darling, who's manager, communications is engagement of Northumberland United Way, and Nicole Beatty from Thrive Northumberland, welcome.
Thank you, your worship and members of council, it's very nice to see you this afternoon. My name is Nicole Beatty, I'm the project consultant with Thrive Northumberland to End Violence Against Women. And I'm here with my colleague Maggie Darling, as you introduced her in her capacity with Northumberland United Way. I'm going to do the first half of the slide and then I'm going to hand it over to Maggie. So thank you very much for having us, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm in line here with the screen, excellent, thank you. Thank you very much for having us, we're Nicole and Maggie. And just to let you know that Period Promise Northumberland is locally funded by the Northumberland United Way and the Thrive Northumberland Coalition to End Violence Against Women, which actually represents about 25 social services across the county that intersects with the mandate to support keeping women and children safe. Next slide, please. Did you know that almost one quarter of Canadian women or women who, or people who identify as women say that they have struggled to afford menstrual products for themselves or their children? This is a statistic from 2018 from Plan International's Period Stigma Report. Periods are a fact of life and so is the need for menstrual products. Sadly, many in our community and across Ontario for that matter cannot afford them. We believe that no one should have to choose between buying groceries to feed their family and being able to afford basic hygiene products. This is why we launched Period Promise Northumberland nearly one year ago on May 28th, 2020, which is World Menstrual Hygiene Day, in order to tackle period poverty in our community as a local response to a global issue. Next slide, please. So you might be asking, what is Period Promise Northumberland? It is a United Way campaign that actually began in the lower mainland in British Columbia. Period Promise aims to address the issues of period poverty in our communities and to increase the accessibility of products to all people who experience a period. Originally led as part of a local tampon initiative, events were held to collect and distribute donated menstrual products for people in need. This transitioned into a rebranding by the United Way of Lower Mainland in which organizers and supporters continue to collect and distribute donations while advocating for free menstrual products in common spaces. This creates a more inclusive advocacy-oriented approach with outreach and education, labor and unions and our local governments. Next slide, please. When we first launched the project in Northumberland County last May, we saw an immediate response from local citizens and businesses looking to get involved. This one story from a Northumberland County resident really touched our hearts and reminded us why we took up this cause. She says, "I came from a low-income family and remember a time or two when my mom would have to make me to use rags to use until we got money for proper items, or she would go without, so I wouldn't have to." We're hearing this a lot in, across Northumberland and it really isn't something that young people menstruating and adults who menstruate as well should be going through. Next slide, please. So the goals of Period Promise Northumberland are plentiful, but we focus on two key categories, advocacy and collection and distribution. Through our goal of advocacy, we're looking to establish connections with local businesses, which we're doing with Northumberland Nurturing Health, which is based out of Coburg, as well as Nurish Boutique, which is based out of Coburg. Outreach to local county and municipal councils, which is why we're here today. We struck up a community action group last October, which represents volunteers from across the county. We've beginning to do some advocacy and outreach with our local labor council. And if you look at us on the internet, we've had some great media coverage from our various news outlets across the county. With respect to collection and distribution, our goal is to make sure that we get free menstrual hydrine products into the hands of people who need it the most. We're achieving this through developing partnerships with local nonprofits and community organizations through Thrive, again with Thrive being a gateway to women's organizations. We're also developing partnerships with other nonprofits, most notably libraries. And we're currently working with students and mothers to get free product into schools. We were building a little bit of momentum around this, but that was understandably paused due to the current pandemic restrictions. At this time, I will hand it over to Maggie.
Thanks, Nicole, and thanks, council, for having us here today as well. So since we launched one year ago, we've distributed more than 5,000 products to individuals and organizations across our community. As quickly as we raised these products, they went right back into our community to support individuals, families and those in need. Listed on the screen here, some of the organizations who have received products so far, including the Northumberland County Warming Rooms, Highland Shores Children's Aid Society, Transition House, Parn, Community Health Centers of Northumberland, Northumberland Hills Hospital, Community Mental Health, the Cobra Public Library, Salvation Army and Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northumberland. We've also had many other successes throughout the year, including a partnership with Nurturing Health and Nurish Boutique that organized a holiday collection drive. We've had three organizations sign agreements to ensure that they will be offering product for free in their washrooms to customers and clients. And we've also had two placement students who recently joined us from the Durham College Public Relations Program who worked with us to build our content on social media and develop our web presence. Next slide, please. Although we launched in the middle of the pandemic last year, we felt this was still important because of the reality of the situation and how period poverty has been exacerbated by the pandemic. Some of the issues include disrupted information, so schools, community centers and other places where women, girls and others who menstruate typically access critical information were unable to do so as they were closed. There's also an increase in the stigma as lockdowns can intensify the impact of household-level taboos. And women and girls who manage menstruation without shame and discomfort can find this more difficult in confined spaces. Access to products was also a large issue over the course of the past year as many subsidized supply schemes, including free distribution of menstrual products in schools, has been suspended. Disrupted supply chains prices have also caused issues, including that such as last year when we saw toilet paper was hard to find on the shelves or Amazon and other retailers running out of tampons and pads in stores. Finally, a lack of access to hand washing and sanitization has caused further issues as millions of women and girls continue to lack access to proper hand washing facilities in order to properly change and dispose menstrual materials safely and comfortably. Next slide, please. That is why this year we have launched our Period Promise Collection Campaign, running from May 6th to June 3rd, in which we are organizing a collection and awareness campaign alongside all Period Promise groups across Canada. This year also, on Friday, May 28th, we will be joining with other nonprofits as a part of a global call to action to celebrate World Menstrual Hygiene Day. We believe in a world without period poverty and period stigma and Period Promise Northumberland is committed to tackling this issue locally. Not having the products you need when you need them can make it difficult to stay connected in your community. Too many single mothers must choose between buying products for themselves or food for their families. Too many trans and non-binary kids are scrambling silently in washrooms, putting together makeshift pads that do not suit their needs. And too many families are missing out on events and social gatherings prior to COVID because it's simply easier to stay home. Next slide, please. Period Promise Northumberland, represented today by Northumberland United Way and Thrive Northumberland, are respectfully, respectfully requesting you proclaim May 28th as Menstrual Hygiene Day. We hope you will join us in celebrating World Menstrual Hygiene Day and help us to work towards ending period poverty in our community. Some of the other ways you can get involved in this campaign is donating product at one of our drop-off locations. This includes Nurturing Health Naturopathic Clinic, Nurish Boutique Spa, United Way, the Cobra Public Library, Foodland Coburg, No Frels in Coburg. As we've, as we're currently in stay-at-home orders, we've added grocery stores to encourage residents to make extra stops, to not make extra stops outside of their home. They can simply pick up and drop off a donation while doing their essential shop. You can also make a financial donation on our website, sign the Period Promise Collection Policy Agreement. You can run your own collection campaign, you could join and promote our community action group, volunteer to help distribute products and help us to share the message of Period Promise Northumberland and educate individuals on the reality of period poverty in our community. Next slide, please. Thank you, and we hope you will consider our request and we can work together towards tackling period poverty in our community. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to our presentation today and thank you. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to our presentation today and thank you.
Nicole, Meg, thank you very much for being with us today. I'm going to open this up if council has comment or question. Yes, Mark.
Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. The one thing I did notice, though, most of your organizations are Coburg or very close to Coburg. Have you expanded outside of the area? Like, are you going north, you know, to the north or to the east of, in the, in the county? Or are you just going to continue to cluster in the Coburg area?
Thank you, councillor. Yes. So is that in relation to the distribution or for collecting in the campaign?
It seemed both when I, when I saw you do your presentation. I didn't see a variance of either one, so. I mean, there is kids, as you know, and mothers and so forth throughout the whole county. And some of the, you know, the poverty exists for the north into the east. So I just thought I would ask that question to what your, your plans were in the future.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So we are looking to develop more relationships with different organizations across the county. To ensure that the products are distributed widely throughout the, the community. And we are also looking to other organizations and municipalities to collect products during the campaign. So we're reaching out to the local public libraries to see if they might also be able to collect during this time.
I guess, if I could, Bill, I just wanted to ask a, a further question to that then. And I do know we have a. Facility out in Butlly that, that they're, they're do. I'm not sure if they're even open at, at present, but they often do food and they do clothing and so forth out there, Community Works. And I wondered whether they were part of your plans in the future or whether they're working with you now at all.
Yes, thank you. So they aren't currently working with us, but we are interested in getting as many organizations on board as possible. And distributing the products as widely as, as possible. So we can definitely reach out to see if there is a need there as well and if they are open at this time.
Larry's next and then you, Pat.
I was just going to say thank you very much for the presentation and bringing this to our attention. Sometimes not talked about, but very important. I didn't realize the impact that it has. And I'll try to look, reach out to some of the contacts I've got in the world, so. See what we come up with. So thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'm sitting on the library board. I know that the, our satellite branches. Are kicking part in this initiative. So just in terms of availability, we're still running into the problem of they're not opening off a lot. But that is happening. I was curious as to if you agree to be a distributor. Actually, I'm going to back up. Am I right in thinking that there's no need for somebody to go up and ask? The availability is more subtle than that? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so they are available in the washrooms.
Okay, as a, if you choose to participate, are you responsible? To at least partially donate to the collection of product?
Maggie, do you want me to?
Sure, if you want to jump in on that one.
Sorry, yeah, but councillor, I believe, if I understand you correctly, you're asking, so if you participate in the distribution. Are you, or in the collection, are you responsible for contributing some of the product to, to the overall drive? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so through the United Way, we have quite astute inventory that we're taking track of. Obviously, there's no sense in a collection point, taking the product, giving it to the United Way and Thrive only for us to give it back. So through capacity and supply and demand across our various collection points. We're, we're monitoring that inventory to make sure that there's equitable distribution across our, where the identified need is. And then to councillor Luchkin's point. At some point, you know, we're going to start getting more donations in one certain area that we'll be able to then distribute into. You know, an underrepresented or an underserved part of the county.
Okay, so if I may, Mr. just have a couple more ideas here. In your thinking about possible distribution areas, which is more difficult in our rural community like ours. Have you given consent, consideration to community centers? Both, both owned by the township or like Gorsland in Hall Harwick Hall or places of worship?
Maggie, I may if you.
Yep, yep. So actually, you will see us again in the fall because that will be a follow up request to the council's.
If we work together in, through some municipal support, as well as the donations and the product that we have access to. And working with each municipal council to get them into public spaces. So schools, libraries, and then again, councillor, as you so rightfully noted, the community centers, places of worship. You know, all these natural gathering places that hopefully when we're able to get out and about safely again. Would need, would need this type of product, while also looking at where naturally, through Thrive and United Way, we have a sense of where. Folks who are of higher need tend to go to access. So in addition to that, you know, we'd also look at working with food banks and food cupboards. As, as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a quick slide to staff, maybe Nicole. And Maggie could touch base with our clerk department with, with either Emily or, or Danielle, someone who could help. Maybe promote on our website or through our new social media. So I'll just leave that out there that, you know, we do have some ways to try to help get the word out there for you. So please touch base with our, our clerk's department. We have a recommended motion that the committee of the whole receive for information, the presentation by Period Promise Northumberland regarding the request for the proclamation. Of Menstrual Hygiene Day in the township of Hamilton. Mover, please. Thanks, Larry. Seconded by Pat. All in favor. And that's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks again.
Thank you, everyone. Take good care. Thank you.
So closed four point one. Need a motion to go into closed session under the Miss Black, two thousand and one, section two thirty-nine, subsection two, part H. To discuss information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, the province or territory or crown agency. Of any of them. Read the Ontario Provincial Police. Mover, please. Thank you, Mark. Seconded again by Pat. All in favor. That's also carried. Are we staying here, Emily? And you're going to clear the slate for us or do we have to move off to another site?
No, we're okay to stay on this link. I'll just take a moment and just stop the YouTube feed and ask those. Who are currently in attendance to, if they're not part of the post sessions, to kindly step out.